Call this meeting to order of the Ellisville Town Council, Monday, December 28th, 2020. Mike, would you lead us in the pledge?
Yes.
That time, Mike, we did lose you. We could hear you barely, but I think we got it. Jimmy, would you like to lead us in the prayer?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Our heavenly Father, almighty God, we come before you this evening, and we just ask your blessings on this little town. We ask your blessings on this, the employees we have here. We ask you to continue to lead and guide us, please see that we may do the right things and do the right way for the right reason here tonight. We ask you be with those lost loved ones. We ask to be with those that are sick and in sorrow, and just be with us here tonight. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Here.
Scott Oldham?
Here.
William Ellis?
Here.
Trevor Sager?
Here.
Pamela Samples?
Here.
Okay, first thing on the agenda, approval of minutes for regular meeting November 23rd, 2020. Is there a motion?
So.
Motion and seconded. Any council comment? Any public comment? Seen on Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, next on the agenda is action to pay accounts payable vouchers and payroll. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second. Any council comment? Any public comment? Seen on Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham? William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Meeting dates for 2021. Has everyone seen a copy of the meeting dates?
And Darla, we put the first Monday of April for your building corp meeting.
Okay, thank you.
And there was, there was a couple that had to be changed. For, well, I don't think there was any for the town council meetings, but I went ahead and added the work sessions every other meeting. We weren't, every other week, we weren't too successful at doing those this year, but they are posted there if you decide, decide you want them.
I think COVID kind of run that for us this year, but hopefully we'll get back on track pretty soon in 2021. Okay, any further discussion? Seen on, entertain a motion.
I approve the meeting schedule for 2021.
Second.
Motion and seconded. Any public comment? Any council comment? Seen on Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the first resolution, Resolution 27-2020 to amend Resolution 14-218 regarding Governor Park Taxes Abatement Regarding a Date Extension. Sandy, is this you?
Well, Kevin and I worked on this, and I believe Kevin sent everyone an email about this right before Christmas, but essentially, the town council had earlier approved on July 9th, 2018, a resolution confirming an ERA for the property located at 5665 West State Road 46, and then the town council confirmed that resolution later on July 23rd. As part of the original resolution, it stipulated that the project was to be completed by 2022, and the contractor is not sure they're going to make that deadline, so they've asked for that part or that stipulation to be removed from the resolution. So what you have before you is Resolution 27-2020, which amends Resolution 14-2018, and I think there may be somebody here from Governor's Park to discuss this. Maybe not?
Do you have a name, Darla?
I don't, and I'm sorry about that.
Okay. So is there anyone from the public here to discuss this? Make sure your mic is unmuted if you are. Okay, I guess there isn't. All right, any further discussion?
Yes, I'll be honest with you. I'm really uninterested in giving them an open contract, essentially. I don't mind extending it another 12 months, if that's the council's pleasure, but to just simply say, hey, this project is out there and you can complete it whenever? I'm not, I'm not going to vote for that, I'm sorry. A 12-month extension because of COVID? Absolutely. You know, and give them that amount of time, but just simply to say, whenever you get around to it, build it, and we're good with it, I'm not there. I'm sorry. It's just not going to happen. At least for me.
I fully agree with Scott.
Yep.
I can't vote for an open extension.
Okay, Darla, was that their, did they hint on when they were going to come around to it, or they wanted to delete it from the amendment, but?
To tell you the truth, Kevin is the one who's had the conversations with the representative of Governor's Park or allied, and so I cannot answer your question.
Okay, I think we probably should table this.
Well, I guess, again, I don't mind voting on giving them an extension for 12 months now, let that pass. If that's not suitable for them, then maybe we can reconsider the entire project at that point. I don't know that we necessarily, at least from my end, need to delay it to vote at all, but that's up to you to him.
Well, I'm concerned because Kevin's not here, neither are the contractors, so really, we're not 100% sure what's going on. So I think it would be best that we tabled it. I mean, that's my opinion.
I mean, for me, it's kind of easy. I'm not, I don't care what is said. I'm not going to vote for something to table it more to 12-month extension at a time. I mean, we can revisit this, but, so I'm prepared to vote for a 12-month extension, but I don't, even if Kevin explains it, or the representatives explain it, I'm still not going to give it open-ended.
Well, I agree with you. My thing on tabling was, I'm sure they didn't mean it that way, but 12 months is correct, Scott. I mean, if it doesn't work for 12 months, then they can come back and look at it, so.
I mean, I'd say to hold them up if they're trying to do paperwork where we can give them an extension now, if we need to revisit that later, we can once again revisit it.
Yeah, I mean, it wasn't, the extension, they had till 2022, was that correct, Darla?
Yes, that's correct.
So, I mean, I don't see what the hurry is right now.
Again, I just know so much of their paperwork that had to go through the federal government was time-dependent.
Oh, that's correct.
Outside of a window that they may have to meet that we're unaware of.
Darla, what would you advise?
I would suggest that you table it so that you can talk to Kevin, and maybe we can get a representative here, and I understand that the council's not inclined to give an open end, but it may be helpful to hear some comment from the folks from Governor's Park.
I agree with you. I'll make the motion to table Resolution 27-2020.
Second.
Motion and second. Any council comment? Any public comment? Seen on Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
No.
William Ellis?
No.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Resolution 28-2020 to approve the purchase and finance of the new fire equipment.
A couple of meetings ago, the town council approved a resolution that PNC had prepared, which is the lender on this project, and it was a plain vanilla, shall I call it, resolution which stipulated that Mike Cornman and Mike Farmer were to be the town's agents for purposes of negotiating the finance part of it, but that particular resolution did not stipulate in particular what type of equipment you were purchasing, nor did it say anything about the purchase agreement between the town and McQueen, which is actually the retailer from whom the town is purchasing the equipment. So I thought it would be helpful to have this in case the state board of accounts circle back to Sandy and ask some particulars about this project, so that's why I drafted this resolution. It's a little more detailed than the one that PNC prepared.
Thank you, Darla. Any further discussion on this? I'd entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve Resolution 28-2020 to approve the purchase and finance of new fire equipment.
Second.
Any council comments? Any public comment? Seen on Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Resolution 29-2020, transfer of funds.
This is just a request from the fire department to transfer when we got our CARES grant, or not CARES, but the coronavirus grant for public safety. It went into the salary lines, and he needed to buy some EMS supplies, so he's requested to move $7,100 from the fireman's salary line to EMS supplies.
Okay, any further discussion, Mike? Thank you for your consideration. This, what we anticipate will be the next surge of COVID-style responses by the fire department locally. This should take us in a very good spot for supplies, as well as, we plan for a little bit more in case it breaks out worse than what we anticipate, but we should be in a good spot. Thank you, Mike. All right, I'd entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve Resolution 29-2020.
Second.
Any council comment? Any public comment? Seen on Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham? Scott, okay, William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Resolution 30-2020 encumberment since, can't say that word, for 2020.
And this is a customary procedure for the end of the year. This is for equipment and supplies that are purchased but not yet paid for, so we carry over appropriations to pay for what we purchased in 2020 into 2021. In the general fund, it's a total of $34,299.63. MVH is 21,800, Parks is 10,400, and our local roads and streets is, I've not got a total on that one, but it's about 51,000, and the law enforcement is 25, close to 2,600, CCD is about 4,000, and the MVH restricted fund is 18,600. So it's a total of $142,950 that we're carrying over.
Okay, any further discussion?
I have a question. What, Sandy?
Yes.
What is that very last one, the motor vehicle highway for the 18,000 and something? What is that?
Well, the state requires us to take 50% of all of our MVH distributions and put them into a restricted fund to be used just to improve our streets and alleyways, and we got our crossing grant this year, and that helped us spend the most of the money, but there was still 18,000 remaining of this year's funds, and so I'm carrying that over to next year to be used on streets just because of that state stipulation, to make sure that we do spend the 50% annually.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any further discussion?
Yeah, Sandy?
Yes.
This doesn't put us in the red for our general fund from this year, submitting this, correct?
Oh, no.
Okay, I didn't think so.
No, we would not be allowed to do that.
I didn't think, well, we'd have to remove it from the rainy day fund, wouldn't we, if something like that happened?
Well, I guess we could in emergency, but I would not let that happen. I would never bring you an encumber sheet that was not funded.
Okay, and we, and so our balances are still looking just as solid as they were?
Yes, they're in very good shape.
All right, good.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seen on, entertain a motion?
Make a move that we approve the encumbrances for 2020, as listed under Resolution 30-2020.
My second.
Any public comment? Any council comment? Seen on Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries. I do want to make a disclaimer. I sent this resolution out to you again today with a change on it. So when I sent you the packet, since then, I've added a $2,500 increase in the general fund for fire department that I did not get included. I didn't update my own resolution, so I wanted to make sure that I corrected that. It'll be, instead of just 34,299, it'll be 36,7 for the general fund.
Is that okay, Darla, or should we amended that?
I think that's okay.
Okay. All right, let's move on to ordinances on first reading, ordinance 2020-29, Town of Ellisville Response Plan for COVID-19. Who wants to take this?
This is something I put together after listening to comments from council at previous meetings and after discussion with the town manager and Mike Cornman. I circulated it to all the town managers and the town council. This is before the council tonight for its approval, and this is a proposed personnel policy and response plan for COVID-19, and it sets forth the general policy goals, how the town tends to identify and ask sick or potentially sick employees to isolate themselves. It also sets forth or discusses a pandemic leave policy, which if this is passed by council, the leave policy will be twice. That's required currently by federal law. It nominates Mike Cornman to be the town health officer to be in charge of notifying the council and supervisors of changes in the CDC maps and guidelines, and so this is before you now for your review and comment.
Okay, any further discussion?
Got a couple of questions, I guess. Under section two specifically?
Mm-hmm, yes.
2.5, 2.6, and if I, yeah, essentially 2.5, 2.6 is most of it. Where, where, and just so I'm understanding this, we're now going to require employees to, who, to report travel?
Yes.
After, or? And I guess, finding a high-risk location.
That's the, I do admit that I have some questions about that, simply because depending on what map you look at, you may get a different response or a different idea of what's considered a high-risk area. So you may want to have discussion among yourselves as to what map we're going to use, and I did not put anything in the ordinance about whether or not the employees were to report travel to their supervisors before or afterwards, but I think the intent was to have the employees tell their supervisors ahead of time if they were traveling to what we would call a high-risk area or an area that shows red on most maps.
Okay, and the employees, I'm sorry, I'm struggling here. 2.6, employee who meets the conditions described in one of the top three shall be required to submit to coronavirus test. Does that meet any of the conditions, or just, or does it have to be all three of those subsections?
My intent was any of them. But obviously, it's whatever the council wants, and I'll make whatever changes.
Sure.
The council suggests.
I'll be honest with you, and again, Darla, please understand, it's not a disrespect thing for you.
I understand.
Issue with requiring the employees to report travel of their off-duty time. If they have symptoms, absolutely, they should be required to report it. But to simply say, hey, I'm going to go to my grandmother's, and she happens to live in what somebody somewhere says is a red area, I don't know that we can hold an employee to that. And I don't know that, quite frankly, it's any of this town's business where those employees are going to, as long as where they're going is legal. If they don't have symptoms, or if they're not symptomatic, or if they haven't had a close exposure, then I, I just don't feel right about ordering them to, you've got to tell us where you're going before you go there.
Scott, could I say something to that?
You're going to have to wait just a minute, Valerie, till we get to public comment, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Yeah, I think my thing too on that, to piggyback Scott, is, as we've seen, that map is constantly changing. And I think that, I think that puts our employees in between a rock and a hard place as far as, is this place high-risk, is it not? This website's showing it high-risk, this website's not, and I just, I don't care for that.
Okay.
Trying to think it, two and three steps down the road, I mean, what's the second order of effect? So we have an employee travel someplace, and then they don't report it. Well, naturally, then the town could potentially try and discipline them, and then we have an argument about, was it red, was it not red? Was it even a legal order to begin with? Was it even a legal policy to begin with? As opposed to, I guess, where's the greatest good for the town at this point? If we trust the employees to be honest with us about their symptoms versus their travels?
Scott, should I like to add too that, like, to have them to tell us where they're traveling, what's it going to do any good? Because they're adults, we can't, if they say, I'm going to Florida, and then we say, oh, that's high-risk, we're not going to tell them, well, you can't go. So what's the use of them reporting it? You know, to tell us ahead of time where they're going.
Agreed, and then we also come with a question of, if you're non-symptomatic, some places won't even test you, so to work, have a negative test. You know, now, most places, you could get it, but then the question comes up, but whose cost? And again, it's usually no cost whatsoever, but at some point, that's going to end. I'm sorry, guys, I just see some potential issues with, with these two things here.
And make it even more, to make it even more confusing, there are some times where, let's say you're gone for a week, well, when you leave, it's not a red zone, by the time you come back, it is. Then what?
So to separate these out then, what I hear the council telling me is that everybody wants to have 2.5 X-sized. You want that redacted, correct? So?
And 2.6, at least modified to be symptomatic and/or close exposure. Because CDC has been pretty consistent on what they consider a close exposure. That really hasn't changed for the last several months.
Wait a minute, Scott, say that again now, on 2.6?
2.6, as it's written here for the public and anyone. Any employee who meets the conditions described in sections 2.2, 2.3, 2.4 shall be required to submit to coronavirus test before returning to work. Those employees who test positive for coronavirus are to report the test date and time to their immediate supervisor and provide a copy of the test results if available. First off, I don't know that we can necessarily mandate to provide a copy of the test results. I mean, I'm sure Darla's looked in that, and we probably can, but again, that just treads really harshly to me on an employee's health status unless they're going positive, and then I think they have a duty to report that. That's, that's clearly a public health issue. CDC, Center for Disease Control, have been very specific and really not very changing at all in the last several months about what they define as a close contact. So if we modify this to say if you're symptomatic and/or you were in close contact with a known positive case, then you have to submit to all of this. I would be much more comfortable with that.
Well, I think if you read 2.3, that kind of states that, if I'm reading that correctly.
No.
So, off-duty, if ill or employees have symptoms of COVID-19, employees are required to report the fact to their immediate supervisors as soon as reasonable be possible.
Right, but we have to, near the close contact.
Yeah, where did you read the close contact? Is that?
That's 2.7.
Oh, okay, so.
But that kind of falls under the, any employee shall make every effort to identify fellow workers. Here, we need to talk about, you know, in some cases, there have been cases where your spouse is COVID-positive, but you're not. Yeah, you need to be reporting that, because the chances of you becoming COVID-positive are substantially elevated. But, or you know, you're with family that's COVID-positive or whatever else. And all has to do with that contact tracing through the health department, and quite frankly, a good dose of common sense. If, if your spouse is COVID-positive, you're likely to become COVID-positive yourself, and that should be reported. I just have this issue with making employees tell us where they're going and making them take a test for no other reason than they went somewhere.
Okay, so really, you're talking about section 2.7, then not 2.6?
No, I'm talking about 2.6 and 2.7.
What, 2.5 is the travel?
Right.
2.6 is talking about 2.3 and 2. through 2.4, so it excludes 2.5 and 2.7?
To some degree, yeah.
Yeah, so.
I see where you're going with it, I'm just.
Yeah, yeah, so you've got 2.5 and 2.7 is what you have the problem with, correct?
To the greatest degree, yes. But again, I think we need to add something along the way about, if you know you've been exposed, you need to be reporting that. And exposure defined as a close contact.
Yeah, I agree. It's definitely very vague, and I'm sure Darla meant it that way for us to hash it out, so. What would you suggest, Scott?
Well, again, just that, let's just delete the 2.5.
Okay. Yeah, I have no problem with that at all.
And again, I don't know how Darla wants to word it, where she thinks it would be cleanest about reporting known close contacts to the employee. And it doesn't matter if it's a fellow employee, a family member, a person you're standing in line with at the grocery store, I mean, if you know they're positive, you need to be reporting that, because we need to give you some time off to make sure you don't develop symptoms, because, you know, again, say you're with somebody tonight who pops positive for tomorrow, that doesn't mean you have it, but we also probably don't want you at work for a couple of days until we figure out whether you're going to get it or not. And while we're on that topic, and maybe it's in here, so Darla, please help me, because I just skimmed this. And while we're on that topic, and, and maybe it's in here, so Darla, please help me because I just skimmed this. We need to have some leeway, or the supervisors need to have some leeway to, for want of a better word, place the employee off, but it doesn't get charged against the sick bank as a precaution. If we were an employer with fifteen hundred people, we could take a few more chances. But so short of the workforce, particularly public safety with police and fire, they don't have a lot of room to maneuver here. So i- if they have a close contact, again, take the fire department, for example, and Mike Corman, please weigh in here. I- if they go do CPR tonight on somebody that, you know, survives but comes back as COVID positive, those firefighters really shouldn't be coming back to work until we're sure they're through their incubation period and they have not caught it themselves. But a- as this sets, it now gets charged against some sick leave that, again, we've created for them. But is that suitable for the council or is, are we going to look at this at more of a, for want of a better word, force protection aspect of it? Because the same goes along for people from Public Works, people from frankly, everything we do around here, because there's only so many people who can drive snowplows. There's only so many people who can fix water leaks. We don't have a tremendous giant workforce where we can take hits. You know, if you take two guys down, that's one thing you can cover for that. But say those firefighters who worked on a COVID positive patient, they come back and infect five or six other firefighters. We can't take that hit in Ellisville, we don't have enough people to go around for that. Or the water guys, or the sewer guys, or the, a- again, Public Works guys. We just can't take those hits, so I would like to see us build in some flexibility here to where those people can be assigned home off and it doesn't hit their COVID bank or whatever else.
Scott, look at section four.
I did, where it talks about two hundred and forty hours, but let's, let's play that out. Again, for the firefighters, that is essentially ten days for them, correct, Mike?
Yes.
Okay, so if they take a run tonight, work on a COVID positive patient, we've now given them two hundred and forty hours. But we're going to need them to at least, at least go seventy two hours before they can even get a test to show that they're negative. So again, look at the firefighters, i- if they take two of those runs and they're off for three days, they've already eaten up most of that two hundred and forty, now what if they do catch it? Now they're into, what time are we giving them at that point?
Well, and that's the, this proposal on this ordinance is that if they have a, you know, close contact, you know, while they're, you know, together, that it's going to be fourteen day quarantine no matter what. And you are correct, that would come out of the COVID, and that isn't a lot of time. Especially when we have, you know, I could tell you one person within our agency that's already used up that of those amount of hours on COVID exposure. So I, I don't, we really didn't know how much time we wanted to give, so we're, I'm glad you're having this conversation.
I just think it's unfair to our employees and to the public, but specifically to our employees, particularly several groups of them that are going to be more at risk of exposure than others, to put a number on this bank. I, I get saying you have to track it, I don't, so, so please understand, I'm, I'm, I'm tracking along with what you're thinking, at least I think you're thinking. Guys, we, we've got to do a little more for our people here, if we're going to put them on sick leave for ten to fourteen days, that eats up their entire bank. So now what happens the next time we go to put them on sick leave because they've been exposed? Where's that time come from?
Well, I think this comes out to a month, you know, I mean, if some, so it would allow for at least two exposures. And then it sets a platform, so we have a guideline to start with. And if we have somebody that would go beyond that, I think that we could, you know, discuss it then and the council could make an exception. I just hate to open it up too much. I mean, it's your choice, but.
Well, Mo, since you're talking about public safety, my thinking, if I have to send somebody home for that period of time, it's my decision to do that, then I think we have to cover those people with something else besides their own, own time and own, own sick time. That's just how I feel about it also, so.
Yeah, Jimmy, I agree with that, I think definitely in, in case of the police and fire, if they're on duty and they're exposed to a close exposure, I mean, I think the town should cover that.
Yes.
Unlimited.
Well, section four point three says, any additional approval for paid sick leave shall be at the discretion of the town council. So there is, I tried to build something in here to allow the employees an opportunity to get additional sick leave. So are you more comfortable, and are, are you more comfortable with having the supervisors decide that? So the council doesn't have to discuss it at maybe a public meeting? Or what are you thinking in terms of incorporating some additional flexibility into the policy?
I personally would like to give the supervisors, the, the lead of each agency, the ability to, to understand their manpower, rank structure, force structure and give them the ability to, to alter that however they need to be. So if somebody needs to be off to protect the rest, give them that time. Let's not make a whole bunch of hoops that they got to jump all the way ultimately to council to make this work. I mean, they, they're individual, they, they've got their individual department head and they've got the town manager. I, I don't need, again, I don't see, this is where council hurts, not helps. Let's put authority down to, to that level.
So how bad if we change four point three to read, any additional approval for paid sick leave shall be at the discretion of the the employee's department head and the town manager? So if the town manager and the supervisor agree, it's done.
Perfect.
I'm good with that.
Okay, so then if I understand, everybody wants two point five redacted. So what if we change then two point six to read? Any employee who meets the conditions described in sections two point two, two point three, or two point four may be required, instead of shall, may be required to submit to a coronavirus test before returning to work. An employee who is symptomatic or who has close, who has had close contact with any individual who has tested positive for COVID nineteen or who has symptoms of COVID nineteen, may be required to submit to a coronavirus test before returning to work. Those employees who test positive for the coronavirus are to report the test date and time to their immediate supervisor period. Does that work?
It does, for me.
And then what, what I'll do to make it consistent then is I'll take the definition of close contact from two point seven and move it up to two point six.
Okay, and while we're at it, I would also like us to strike section four point four. Reads any employee who does not comply with the travel restrictions, but who does not fall ill is required to use their own paid time off or accrued sick time if ordered to do so by supervisor to quarantine for fourteen days. Employees who do not, not comply with travel restrictions placed an undue burden on the town and their fellow employees. I mean, I think we've already discussed the issues behind that pretty well, I, I just think that needs to go.
On the travel restrictions, Darla, was, was that the supervisors, managers wanted to see that in the policy or? Did you?
Well, I wish he were here. I think Mike Farmer's concern, and I, I hate to speak for him because I may not be accurate, but I think his concern was that understanding the issue that you've all discussed, which is you could take a vacation and, you know, William's right. It could, you could be going to an, a yellow area and by the time you get back, it's red. So even taking that in consideration, I guess Mike Farmer was maybe a little concerned about the workforce being affected because employees may be totally ignoring travel restrictions. So I guess that was sort of my attempt to come up with something to address that, get leave it flexible so that the supervisors would have a say in it and the town manager would have a say in it. So I mean, if you don't like it.
Darla.
Good, so, yes.
I'm here, I'm here.
Okay, I'm sorry, well, speak up.
Well, I, I was waiting my turn.
All right, I'm sorry.
So yeah, four point four, it, it sure does read to be a bit harsh and maybe not as pointed to allow there not to be misunderstanding about what we're trying to do. Really, what, what, you know, and everything's so fluid, I mean, by the time we get to this point, things that made me consider what we do just before this point w- was from the past. So, you know, I'm thinking if, you know, they keep talking about perhaps January being the worst month that we'll have in this whole experience. If we have stay at home orders and there are state restrictions or local restrictions and people do not comply and, you know, we're without any other resolution, then, I mean, if it gets to that point, then if somebody says, well, I'm going to go wherever I want to go, blah, 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 then we may want to just let them stay home until we decide it's not a problem for us. It was not to be harsh to any of our employees, but there did need to be a, it does need to be a somewhat of a stick, if you will, for a time where everybody needs to do a certain, everybody needs to follow a certain behavior because it's been placed on all of us. And if somebody doesn't comply to that, comply with that, and we feel like we want them to stay home and it, let's say it's a repeated action, we may want to ask them to use their own time. The whole, the whole idea behind this was to have flexibility and security for our employees as it goes with their pay and to be safe. And so I really appreciate everybody's comments on this because it would, it, it would be hard to bring all this to somebody's attention and try to write it down and, and there not be pitfalls in it. So four point four, we definitely could change because I can see, you know, reading it, I can see where it would it would be a harsh stick with no good reason to say you can't go somewhere. But, but there may be a time, and I'll finish with this, there may be a time where if we're put under a stay home order or do not travel order or anything like that, we need to be able to i- if an employee thinks it's against their rights and they go against what's good for the herd, we may want to say, well, that's fine, stay home and use your own time. But I, I, I could be wrong after listening to all the other comments.
I, I'm sorry, I just, I don't disagree with your thought process, Mike, I just disagree with A, is it fair to, to kind of put it in writing like this? But I don't know that we can even force them to use their own time if we're the ones that tell them they can't report to work.
And I'm good with that.
So Mike, if I'm understanding you correctly too, is say that there is another stay at home and we have everyone stay at home and not report to work and we pay them, you're saying if they take a vacation and go somewhere, blah, 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 that it's a hot zone, whatever. You're saying that if we're under the order of them staying at home and they take a vacation, that's what you're trying to protect?
Well, I'm saying if there are travel restrictions, I, I mean, you know, whatever I was saying, what I'm saying now is, I, I'm saying if there's travel restrictions for everyone and people do not comply and let's say they do it more than once, there needs to be some way of releasing the town, I mean, currently what we're talking about here is making everybody safe and we're going to try to do everything we can to pay you for staying home, so you're safe, we're safe. And, but i- i- if we have a wild card, if you will, and somebody decides, they'll just do what they want, when they want, and, and it becomes a problem. It, it, the stick is, you might have to use your own time, which still is time we give them. So I don't know, I, I might be off base with this, I, I'm a little bit worried about the whole thing about telling people what to do, where they can go, where they can't go. But I'll be damned if we're not in a pandemic and things are just a little different than usual, you know.
Yes. How about we have to do that? Employees who willfully violate national or state orders, subject themselves to discipline. Hang on, Scott, I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. Is the, whoever has the dog, can you mute your mic real quick? Okay, go ahead, Scott, sorry.
So why don't we add a paragraph somewhere, four point whatever, that any employee who knowingly violates national or state level orders may be subject to discipline at the town level? And then just leave that open ended, I mean, I don't think you can force them to use their own sick time, but you could certainly suspend them without pay if they violated a law or, or some type of guidance.
Well, that's fine, but like I said, I was trying not to ever really get into anybody's pocket here. And financial security is important, especially nowadays.
I get it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I really think this is just a tough situation all around. Hopefully in a few months, we won't have to deal with this, but yeah, I appreciate everyone's hard work on this for sure. I think this tweak in just a little bit of this is really going to help us and you know, I, I see your point, Mike, I just, I don't know how to say it though, I mean, I don't know.
Well, listen, let, let, let me just say this. In the beginning, when things were uncertain and we were all going through this, there were people that did not think there was a pandemic. I don't think any of our employees, as best to my knowledge, doesn't realize we're in a pandemic and we're trying to keep each other safe. And I'm pretty proud about the way everybody's come around to just hanging in there and keeping everybody safe and working together. So I, I don't care if we keep that in there or not, I, I mean, I, I just, it was a good idea, but maybe now it's not.
I'm not saying it's not a good idea, I'm saying maybe there's a different way to get there.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, say it either way, but I, I'm more interested, I mean, I don't need, I don't absolutely need four point four in there. I, I could live without it right now. I mean, push comes to shove, we'll get them in a headlock, so I, I, I don't care.
So to follow up on Scott's comment, any, to add a paragraph that says, any employee who knowingly violates state or state or federal guidelines shall be subject to discipline. Specifically, what guidelines are you referring to?
The travel restrictions and or anything, again, if Mike wants to kind of feel that out a little more, flesh that out a little bit more for us, what he was intention was. And, and may not be shall, I would prefer may be subject to. Again, use the analogy, you know, God forbid somebody's grandmother dies and they're in a red zone and federal government says, don't travel to a red zone. Well, they're going to travel there for the funeral. I don't worry, I'm always lying to us, I would prefer they say, look, I, I may have been exposed, I, I need to be off.
Well, how about this, Darla, Mike, everyone, this is just under first reading. So Darla, can you work with Mike? And Mike, you work with the supervisors and maybe kind of work with something and bring it back to us in two weeks? Or, I don't know, Scott, how do you feel about that?
I, I'm completely good with that, I just wanted to bring up some objections now so we could all talk about it before we get too far down this road.
And I think we'll let the rest of the council chime in before we do that on what their opinions are. So council, William?
Sorry, having trouble muting. I guess one of the things that, this is such a fluid situation, especially when we add in getting the vaccine. I feel like we're trying to nail down Jell-O for this, I really do. Because, I mean, right now, the vaccine, we don't know if that prevents transmission or people carrying. But by the time we finalize this, they may have some data and says it does, so then are we going to have to rewrite it? That you can travel unrestricted, don't have to report it because you're not going to be able to transmit it? So I, I, I'm really in a big question mark for this whole part of this. Even, I, I, I just think it should be so broad that if you've come in contact with somebody that, that is positive, you have to let us know, but I, I just, I don't know, I just have a hard time even the, getting into the weeds with violating travel orders and stuff like that. Do we tell people that if you speed, you gotta let us know? I mean, I don't know, I, I just think this is too broad.
Well, William, I, I agree with you. And, and it is so fluid that by the time we get something down on paper and agree on it, we'll probably want to change our mind. The, the, the original intent was, I felt a little pressure from a lot of different people saying, well, we need some rules or we need some guidelines was, wa- wa- is a better way to put it. We need some guidelines of what to do if somebody gets sick or somebody thinks they're sick or this, that. or this, that and the other. And then the other concern was, we need something in writing from the council that says that we can let them stay home or we can have them go home, um, to avoid, well, um, to, um, you know, for concerns over safety. And so all the other things, you know, things like four point four can go away, the two point seven can go away. I just needed, I felt like I needed to do something to kind of, uh, give everybody something to look at and a guideline and to give us the flexibility to make a snap decision and send somebody home and they get paid until we can figure out, do they need to be tested? Do they need 14 days off quarantine and, and have that flexibility and, 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 and allow for that to happen without worrying about, uh, the, the employees', um, financial welfare. So, um, I agree with you, William, it's fluid and, but I, I just felt compelled to, um, have something that was a guideline for everybody to kind of follow and, and, and to let the department head send somebody home and feel good about it in the, you know, in the idea that you're keeping people safe and you're not causing them to have financial loss. That's all I, that's all this is really about for me.
No, I, I understand that and I don't disagree with that at all. I mean, we have to have some type of policy because we also don't want employees coming to work sick because they think they're not going to get paid.
Right, and that's all this is about. Well, that's it, that's it in a nutshell.
Putting in the travel things and things like that and complying with, with regulations. I mean, I just can see people, oh, you weren't wearing a mask? Oh, that's how you caught the COVID, you know, things like that. I just, I, I don't think we need to be the enforcement of government directives unless.
Well, you can make, yeah, I agree. You can make a mistake because people that, you know, what, what I've seen is we've had some positives and I know people that's tested positive and they were the most careful people, um, that I know. And they, they were most diligent about doing all the safety requirements. So, um, it's not even really about bad behavior. Although I did mention that we probably ought to have some kind of stick in there for somebody that just will not protect the rest of us. But i- it's really not about bad behavior. It's about allowing us to, uh, separate employees or send them home for their own good and our good and it not being a financial burden. That's all this is about. So I think Darla and I, after listening to all the comments by the, uh, board, I think we can kind of thin this out a little and, uh, make it work.
So Mike, what we've talked about so far tonight, does that kind of meet your objectives though? As far as basically opening up the bank and saying it's on you and the supervisors?
It does and, and, and I really appreciate everybody's comments and concerns and concerns about people's individual liberties. So, um, I get all that and so, yeah, this works. I, I mean, I, I think, I, I think it's going to be easy to finish this out with Darla's help.
Okay, um, Trevor, would you like to add anything?
Yeah, um, I appreciate everybody's hard work on this first off. Everything, uh, looks pretty good to me, like the rest of the council. Um, just my biggest hangup and something I can't get on board with is the travel restrictions. Um, don't think it's up to us to determine where, or where they cannot go. And I would just hate to see our employees be docked their paid time off or accrued sick time for that. Um, I'm out on four point four.
Pam?
I think we should take it out.
Okay, anything else Pam?
No.
Okay, um, anything else Scott? Any final comments from the council? Okay, seeing none, um, Darla, I think that gives you plenty of things to work on. Um, and you and Mike and whoever else needs to get with this. And hopefully you can, um, um, have something together for us in two weeks and we'll go from there.
And I know you already had a comment.
Yeah, I was getting ready to open it up for the public, for public comments. Valerie, did you have something you wanted to add?
Not add, I just didn't, when Scott was speaking, he bleeped out for a minute on my computer and I couldn't hear what he was saying. So I just wanted him to repeat it, but I'm sure it's been repeated.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
That's okay, but I, but as I've been listening, I will say that, um, I'm familiar with two businesses that do require advanced knowledge of travel. But it wasn't for the intention of, of trying to stop them. It was for the intention of helping them to know that in that particular business, uh, you would be quarantined when you came back, mandatory quarantine. This was in the worst shutdown. And you was, if you traveled, you could travel wherever you wanted, but know that if you left the state, you had to be, you had to submit to a two week quarantine from your job when you came back. And I don't know how they had the authority to do the quarantine, but, but it made the difference in the people deciding whether or not they wanted to go because they knew ahead of time, uh, that, that restriction.
Sure.
I, that may not have been a bad thing.
Yeah, thanks Valerie. Clark, you have something to add?
Y- yeah, um, thank you. I, I was just throw, wanted to throw out an idea as you're, as you're considering all this. Um, one of the things that's obviously brought this about is, is pandemic. I'm just wondering, instead of making it that specific, if you could also maybe create a switch in it to say, uh, these rules apply during noted pandemics, during executive orders, uh, emergency, you know, national emergencies or, you know, extreme, extreme conditions to where maybe these rules apply during this time. And then there'd be a notice to say, hey, look, these rules need to be enacted by, uh, town council um, or by the city manager of some sort. And then at the conclusion or at the end of that, they turn off and it goes back to the normal policies. So maybe there's a way to kind of put an overlay or a trigger on that. Not trying to make it over complex, but just saying that, you know, under these types of circumstances, executive orders, uh, national emergencies, um, natural disasters, then these rules would apply. And then when they, when they're lifted or whatever, then those rules go back to the normal side of that. Maybe during that, uh, time, there could be some sort of, um, you know, discussion between supervisors and, and the employee and, and some of the other things. So again, just throwing that out as an idea of a kind of a switch on, switch off sort of thing. Provide notice to the employees when it turns on and provide notice when it turns off. So just throwing that out.
Thanks Clark, that's an excellent suggestion. Um, anyone else from the public? Russell, I see your hand up.
I'm concerned that town council needs to be in this loop. I realize that pandemics and national emergencies don't happen on a two week schedule, which is convenient for the town council. But put something out here to where at the next town council meeting, uh, the council will, uh, have a motion to, to recognize the emergency or, or whatever caused the triggering of this clause.
Thank you, Russell, another great suggestion. Anyone else?
I'd like to add that both of those are somewhat covered in section six. There is a section, uh, expiration date.
Thank you, Sandy.
Well, then I have to, uh, I would like to ask another question though, because my intent when I drafted this was to just have this like temporary personnel type policy. Um, but if the town council wants to make it a permanent policy, I can rewrite it to fit it under a specific section of our personnel policy in the code, which I haven't done with this. So if you're, if you're inclined to do what Clark has suggested, then I would probably rewrite it and just find a section for the personnel policy to cubbyhole this under. Um, if you intend to make it a kind of a, a permanent policy that could be enacted or put into place depending on, uh, what national emergency is declared. So that was not my intent though, when I drafted this, but I can turn it into that, I guess.
Well, personally, I think, um, I like what you originally did because, um, with it being shut off and something else like this, I think we probably should look at that situation different. Um, it could be a totally different situation, so, um, I, I'm fine either way.
I agree with you. I think each individual thing is its own sphere of problems. And I, I mean, again, to remind everyone, we're still under declared state of emergency, not only by the governor, but by the council. And when the council lifts that state of emergency, then this would go away. Of course, it would still be on file somewhere if we need to reenact it. But part of the issue with leaving it there for later council action is the absolute fastest the council can meet by law is 72 hours from the date of the incident or from anything happening. We have to publish notice before we can even meet. Yes, there's some emergencies that we can otherwise, but under normal times, it is 72 hours. So I really think, you know, what Darla said, it's in effect until this emergency goes away. And then if we have to create something later, we can create it specific to that problem.
I agree Scott. And Clark, I'm sure if you could read the whole ordinance, you would have seen that too. It's one thing we're going to try to work on with Zoom, uh, and putting things up on the, um, screen for everyone to read. So I apologize for that.
No worries, I'm good.
Yeah. Um, anyone else in the public would like to make a comment? I, and Darla, I'm sorry, did that answer your question or that was just me? Scott, um, does the rest of the council want to chime in on that? Trevor?
I'm good with the original that Darla's done here.
Okay, William?
I think I'm okay.
Okay, Pam?
I'm okay.
All right, okay, all right, uh, move on, I'm sorry. Um, anyone else from the public have a comment? I'm not seeing anyone else. So if we're ready to move on, we will move on to something else. Darla, are you okay with all this?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving along, ordinance on second reading, there is none, no old business. Uh, flood report, is there anything new on the flood report? Mike?
Uh, no, not really. They just sent some calculations for us to look at, um, or review. I, I think they basically were sending me some information to let me know they're working on the project. And so, uh, we're, uh, we're, we're starting to take the fence down around the old Vine Street property and making preparations to, um, to demolish it. So other than that, no.
Uh, Mike, speaking of that real quick, um, so that has been vacated now, correct?
Uh, yes, we're in possession of it, uh, it's locked, uh, the, the utilities. Uh, we've asked for disconnects from all the utilities. And like I said, we're making preparations to bring the building down. Uh, we're looking into recycling some of the material. Uh, I'm not sure that's going to be possible, uh, like the, the tin roof and things like that. Uh, and we are taking the fence down, which was something the DNR wanted all along. So it's almost removed now and so, yeah, we, we own it.
Great, thanks Mike. All right, um, moving on, well, any council have any comment on anything Mike said?
Hey Mike, do we have to bid the, uh, removal of that property out?
Uh, you mean the demolition?
Yes.
Well, we're going to try to do it ourselves. We, we demolished the last building and hauled it off.
Okay, thanks.
Any further comments from the council? Any public comment? Seeing none, we will move down to new business. Uh, fire department, personnel change Sergeant Matt Seabot from full-time firefighter sergeant to part-time firefighter. Is this Mike?
Uh, Sergeant Matt Seabot has taken a position, uh, full-time with the Monroe Fire District starting January 3rd. He is, uh, will be taking a sergeant position at that fire department as well. And he does want to stay on as part-time with our department. And any change in personnel status does require the, uh, town council approval. And I recommend that we move, uh, Matt, uh, from, uh, full-time to, uh, part-time.
Thank you, Mike. I'd entertain a motion. Anyone?
Sorry, I'll make a, yeah, I'm trying to find it here too, sorry. I'll make a, uh, motion for the fire department, um, how should I read this here? To, uh, for personnel change Sergeant Mike Seabold from full-time firefighter sergeant to part-time firefighter.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second, any council comment? Any public comment? Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, next under new business, agreement between the town of Ellisville and Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation regarding the school resource officer. Jim, is this you?
I just, I just know it's a two, we know it's a two-year contract. Darla, Darla fixed it up for us, uh, about two weeks ago and they, uh, the school has signed off, the town, the school board has approved the two-year contract and, uh, it's, uh, good to go. So we're in good shape with them. The kids are going back to school, of course, Monday, uh, the third, I believe, or the fourth maybe. And, uh, they'll be on a hybrid, uh, schedule with the high school going every other day, uh, in school and every other day online and the, uh, grade schools being, uh, Monday, Tuesday and Thursday, Friday with deep cleaning on Wednesday. So I think we're in good shape. We've got two excellent officers and, uh, they're looking forward to get back to work.
Thank you Jimmy. Any further discussion? I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to accept the agreement between the town of Ellisville and Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation regarding the school resource officers.
Motion and second, it's Scott, did you second?
Either one of us, either me or Trevor, doesn't matter.
Okay. All right, any council comment? Questions, any public comment? Seeing none Sandy Rocco?
Dan Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, next under new business fencing regulations. Um, was this Kevin?
This was me.
Who's me, I'm sorry.
William.
Oh, go ahead, William.
Uh, yeah, last, uh, end of last month, beginning of this month, it was brought to, uh, mine and the other council members' attention. Uh, first of all, I didn't even realize that Ellisville had an ordinance that we pretty much had to, uh, check and with people when we wanted to build a fence on our own property. Uh, there is a person that had got kind of caught up in this, to be honest with you, that he had purchased the stuff beforehand, uh, before the pandemic, but started construction after another road went in on a cross street. And a couple of things, he had a administrative hearing, I believe that's what it was called. Uh, and they agreed that the law was enforced properly. But what this would do, he, you're, you're only allowed to have a four-foot fence on a cross street. And I'm thinking we need to relax the code somehow and revisit this because cross streets, if the road's flat, I don't even see why we're getting involved with it. People can have a clear point of view. But also there needs to be some grandfathering in with this, that if you started construction before the street was built, uh, and part of the construction, signing the contract and ordering the parts, I don't think you should be held accountable. This fence, I've driven by it, most of the council members have driven by it, our town managers driven by it. Uh, it is not affecting visibility. And this kind of one size fits all situation, uh, I'm concerned with. This is something that people go to Ellisville to escape, uh, this type of micromanagement. this type of micromanagement, in my opinion. And then secondly, in this case, the gentleman filed for one hearing and I think that what was Sandy, what's the cost that he filed for the administrative hearing? Was it one fifty?
I'm sorry, I cannot answer that right off. Darla, do you know?
Don't know.
Okay, well, he was confused over which thing to file. And then his emails from Kevin, Kevin had told him that the the members of the BZA, which handles the appeal for this, they have more flexibility with an administrative hearing than than a variance hearing. And I was in on that meeting. And I didn't see where they really had any flexibility at all. It was, was the law applied properly for this instance? Yes or no? It was a binary choice. And but in the emails to the petitioner, he was told this was the had the most flexibility. So I don't want the petitioner to have to pay to file a variance because there's no, I don't know the difference between an administrative hearing and a variance hearing. How would I expect the member of the general public to know? And is Darla, can we as a council move for this person when they refile for a variance? Can that be waived?
Well, I don't know. I could check the code or the planning and zoning in the BZA rules. I don't know the answer to your question, William.
Okay, because I really do not want this guy hit twice. I mean, honestly, other area, other fences in the area are grandfathered in because they're built before 2005. If they're a hazard to traffic, it doesn't matter when they're built. And I don't know, this whole situation, I'm just pretty disappointed with from the town of Ellisville's perspective. And I think we need to revisit the code, maybe. My suggestion, and we would need to get, you know, more detail, just in broad strokes, is we only we don't even deal with people putting up fences. They just cannot obstruct field of view at intersections that have a slope or hill. I don't know how everybody else does it, but as a property owner, I would have never thought I had to ask permission to build a fence on my property, never.
And Darla, correct me if I'm wrong here, but if we change the code, does it go to planning first? Or does it start with the council?
Well, the procedure is outlined in Indiana Code thirty-six dash seven dash four dash six oh seven, which allows the town council actually to initiate a proposal to change the planning and zoning ordinances. So if it's initiated by the town council, the proposal has to be referred to the plan commission for consideration and recommendation. And then the plan commission handles it from there on as if the plan commission were initiating the proposal, meaning the plan commission would consider it and refer it back to the legislative body with a certification. Does that make sense? So the commission would would refer it back to the town council and give it a positive recommendation or negative recommendation. And then the town council can adopt, reject, or amend the proposal. So yes, the short answer to your question is a zoning ordinance change, not or not a rezone. So not a change to the zone maps, but any other zoning ordinance can originate with the town council. But I guess I would have to know in a little more detail if you want me to draft something. I heard William say three things, I think, and the issue was fence height, permission. And there was an issue with whether or not the town council can waive a fee or can tell the planning director to waive a fee for an application. So so I guess I heard three issues when William was discussing this.
I would like to make a comment since I'm on the plan commission. When we established those rules and brought them to the council on fence height, you know, the main thing was to maintain the site triangle for intersecting streets. And the, it was written for that purpose. But you know, for every rule, there's always an exception. And this particular fence had some exceptions. When they contracted the fence, the side road wasn't installed. Now, it was clearly platted on the plat that there would be a road there. And, you know, I'm pretty sure it was the gravel was down showing that road. But at the same time, this fence does not obstruct the traffic. I mean, or the site triangle. And so I think there was confusion. I listened to the BZA meeting and I think the BZA was even confused on the type of administrative appeal or whatever the there was, they requested. Normally, people come and ask for a variance of the rules. If they can't meet the rules, then they ask for a special exception to their fence because it has a different situation. And in this, the way that it went to the BZA, it was more like, did the plan commission interpret, or did the planner interpret the code properly? Which really did not help that homeowner whatsoever. So rather than jump in and change all of the rules and say they're all bad, I think that we should, you know, ask for a variance on this specific fence. And, you know, as a plan commission person, I would not object to waiving the fees for this because I think it was very confusing the way it was handled. And, you know, I've been at this a while. I'm not a professional planner, but I've been on the plan commission a long time and things have changed from the past. They always change and evolve. Used to, they were, they would come before the plan commission. And if it didn't meet our code, then it went to the BZA. Now, there's all kinds of issues that go directly to the BZA that the plan commission is totally unaware of. I mean, we may have to make, make a point to understand and and look for what's being on that. It's not gone through the plan commission. And I'm not objecting to that. I'm just saying that sometimes it gets confusing when the plan commission makes a rule and we don't see that that rule was maybe not so good because of the situation that's getting caught up in. And I'm, I'm rambling a little bit, but I do think as a plan commission member, he should have been able to ask for a variance from the code to allow his fence. It should have been able to be granted at one meeting. And he had plenty of pictures. There was three fences across from him that were on the roadway that had exceeded the four feet. So, you know, in his defense, he had no way of knowing that he was doing anything inappropriate. And the way his lot lies out, the site triangle is maintained. So that's my take on it. Sorry to talk a little long there.
Well, yeah, I'm not sure really where to go with this, to be honest with you. I that really had to gone to the planning commission first?
No.
Or the
Well, I, I'm not always involved in BZA matters. And so I do not know the case you're talking about specifically, but from what I gather, what happened was Kevin had made a decision with regard to this particular fence. And so the petitioner then has a choice of going to the BZA and asking and appealing the zoning administrator's decision, which is one of the jobs of the Board of Zoning Appeals. That's what they do is they can hear an appeal if the petitioner thinks the planning director made an incorrect decision and didn't follow the ordinance. So that's one path that petitioner could take. Path number two is either a variance or, as Sandy said, a special exception, depending on what the circumstances are. So I don't know what conversations were had or, you know, why the petitioner took choice number one as opposed to choice number two. But I, I just, as a side note, I would agree with Sandy that rather than changing the ordinances completely, it might be better to have this petitioner circle back around and meet with Kevin when he comes back from vacation and apply for either a special exception or variance, whichever's appropriate under the circumstances. I don't have the whole code in front of me. I had just copied some sections with regard to fencing. So I don't have the whole code in front of me, but and that was maybe a better answer than you wanted, but.
No.
Russell's on the BZA. I'm thinking that we should waive the public comment because in a sense, he's an official involved with this here, if you would, and he has his hand up, Dan. I didn't know if you want to hear.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I see his hand up. I was, I acknowledge you, Russ. I was going to wait till after Darla spoke and make sure the council is finished.
Okay, are you ready?
Yeah, go ahead, Russell.
There was great confusion in the petitioner's mind whether to do A or B. He decided to start with the challenge that the rules were improperly interpreted. Clearly, they were not. The BZA was instructed that we could only rule on that issue. We could not rule like we normally would on an appeal or a request for variance because it was not published as a variance hearing. Now, if we have a very published hearing for a variance and the petitioner reapplies, we can consider the facts and the matter will be handled judiciously. So again, we're sort of, we were sort of hand, hand tied up by the regulations and procedures. William, I can understand this gentleman's frustration. Unfortunately, I would have to agree, or fortunately, that we don't want to start changing our entire planning documents just to meet one outline, relatively outline case. And folks, this isn't going to be the only case we have like this. We're a town that was laid out before horse, in a horse and buggy era. We're a town that's grown into other jurisdictions where we're going to run up against stuff previously done that does not fit our current standards. So we're going to have to deal with these on a case-by-case basis as they come up and as we do on a regular basis. That's the purpose of BZA, to deal with these issues as issues as expeditiously and fairly as we can. So with that said, I agree with what Sandy says. William, I agree with your points. And I think the proper course is to let the petitioner come back and file an appeal and the BZA then can do their job and take care of it. As to the fact about whether or not he should be charged a fee, I'll leave that to Darla and the council. That's not really something a BZA member would would necessarily have an appointment on, a opinion on or a right to have an opinion on, but that, that's something you guys figure out. Thank you, Dan.
Thanks.
Go ahead, William. Yeah, can I add that it is, I've seen all the emails back and forth between the petitioner and planning. And by if I were reading those, I would think, because originally he was going to file a variance. And he was clearly told the administrative had more flexibility. So, I mean, that's, so I'm just letting you know from the emails between he and Kevin, that was clear.
Okay, I thank you for that info. I either missed reading it or did not see that email.
Yeah, he was, there was a couple of things in those emails that were concerning to me that because he asked Kevin specifically, you know, would you put your opinion forth on how this should be handled? Kevin said no, but in listening to the meeting, which I believe is recorded on Katz, Kevin made his opinion clear on the matter. And that's troubling because the petitioner feels like, you know, he's got the whole government against us. And to regulations, my changes, I, I think are more of a I just, I, how, how would we expect a person to know building a fence to get permission first? I guess that's what I'm asking. I mean, if they're going to paint their house, would they think they have to get permission first? Or so, I mean, I understand it's a slippery slope and I understand, but I, I think that we're going to have more of these because as we're growing, people are going to be moving in here from other places. They're going to be escaping things like this. And they're going to assume Ellisville's different. And I think we have to find a good balance with that. We don't, we just, we have to have some plan, but I think we need to plan for, to address the issue. If site visibility is the issue, then we need to draft an ordinance specifically for that. Like, I can't remember the term Sandy used, a site cone or something, correct?
A triangle.
Triangle, address for that. But somehow we have to, I don't know how to get the word out for people because I don't want people violating ordinances and not knowing they're violating them and being in situations like this. And as we get our population increases, this is going to happen more and more.
William, I agree with you in many respects, but I'll tell you my experience in planning. Builders and contractors are out there to make the most profit out of a project. And the biggest problems we see other than the fact that we're moving into modern era zoning requirements that didn't exist 50 years ago when Ellisville annexes into adjacent lands is the builders and the contractors, they're not really out there looking for the code. They're not looking at it. And I'm really concerned that the site triangle is critical, but I think we ought to revisit the entire setback issue because we've had two other cases where a fence or fence height was an issue in the last two years. And in both cases, the BZA did rule based on more or less what was the right situation. But these are situational, situational debates, issues that need to be taken on a case-by-case basis. I would be very concerned if we drastically change our current rules and regulations. That's just my opinion.
Thanks, Russell. And I hate to cut you short, but I think Valerie has her hand up. Valerie?
Dan Rary and I, so Dan, you can pipe up if I'm, you think I'm wrong. Dan Rary and I service trustees for the Methodist Church and we own the property next to us. When those people and our renters wanted to put a fence up, we just naturally checked with Kevin to see if there were any restrictions. And we're not on a corner, officially we are, but that's not really a street. And it never, it was just natural for us to check. And my thought was, it wasn't because of line of sight as much as it was because also to try to preserve some of the aesthetic value of our community. I love Doc Guzic, but let's use his as an example. We all know where he lives. If we all put up privacy fences that were 12 feet tall across the front of our property on Temperance Street, I think it might change the look of things that some of us might not be really excited about. So I didn't think anything of the fact of knowing that my fence needed to be no more than four foot tall in the front and on a street front. I thought that was very reasonable. And then the rest of the fence could be higher in the back. And so I, I'm, I'm not sure who I'm disagreeing with or whatever, but I just think it's not unreasonable to know that. And whether I paint my house red, green, or purple is, is a matter of personal taste, probably, but the fence is not.
Thank you, Valerie. Any other public comment?
Sure, I'll, I'll chime in. It's Michael Farmer. I think this might be a perfect example of when a work session would be called.
Exactly, Mike.
Yeah, there's two sides of this coin. And we all want to live the way we want to live, and that's where Ellisville comes in. But we always want to be cognizant of our neighbors' concerns and likes and dislikes. And so to try to cover all that and be within codes that are now enforced or in play, we probably had a work session so we can get answers from our lawyer, answers from the planner and make our concerns known so we can see how to work them out.
Great suggestion, Mike. I was actually going to say the exact same thing. Any other further comment? Any other further comment?
Yeah, I guess I do. I think Russ is correct. The BZA is there for unusual circumstances. Where we kind of disagree is when these circumstances creep up more and more, they're no longer unusual circumstances. Now they're issues that, quite frankly, I believe the council needs to weigh in on because if it's happening more and more, then it's unfair for us as the legislative body and quite frankly, in a town, as the executive body, to not give guidance to those subordinate boards, whether they be planning or BZA. It kind of leaves them just hanging out there in the wind. Without getting too deeply into it, I am deeply worried, upset, disappointed that we even got to this point with this individual property, that it should have never occurred in this fashion. That said, we're here and we need to deal with it. I think it's a little bit of overreach for the council now to say, we're going to waive fees because they're quite frankly, not our fees at this point. Darla, you can tell me otherwise, but I think it would be a more inappropriate to waive those fees, particularly for a, what would essentially be a redo of what should have occurred to begin with. I do think we need to revisit this code because again, now we're asking BZA and, well, frankly, BZA, but plan commission even, to rule on what they think we want, not what we may actually want. Because if this problem is coming up more and more, clearly it's going to continue coming up more and more. And what we're going to get is divided rulings where one person on one side of the street got one ruling, another person on another side of the street got a completely different ruling. And that's just simply not fair. So I, I think we need to look at how we got here to begin with and address those issues. But I think we need to look at the overall picture as a whole and not completely rewrite the apple cart and all the rules, but we need to amend them to where they make sense. And, and not just gives, not just give BZA more issues that they have to deal with and they're already very limited amount of time.
I agree, Scott. And I think the, the best way to do this is a work session. Because obviously we cannot really break into the code right now and start rewriting and, and sending recommendations out. So Sandy, do you have a work session scheduled in January, correct?
Yes, on the off Mondays. So let me tell you when the next one would be here.
And William, does this work with you too, a work session?
Well, absolutely. I wasn't planning, in talking to Sandy, I knew kind of the procedure. I guess, and I want to make it clear to Scott, I'm not asking to waive variance filings for everybody. I'm just talking about this one petition.
No, I completely.
And my concern is, and I addressed it, because I asked for this to be tabled as a member of the public, I asked for it to be tabled at the BZA until we could address it. And it was not. But I'm worried this gentleman's going to get, start getting fined.
Well, that was a big question for Darla. Darla, can we issue a stay or moratorium on any fines until we can deal with this problem more?
You're, you're muted, Darla.
Darla?
Sorry. I don't think Kevin or Denise would have a problem with just holding off on the fines until this is resolved. Again, I don't know what correspondence was sent to this gentleman or what the issue was, but considering that council has some questions about this, I don't, I will certainly recommend that they hold off on finding this gentleman until a decision, until he makes a decision as to how he wants to move forward on this. Is that fair?
I think that's very fair. Okay, Russ, go ahead, real quick.
Yeah, this may have been discussed after the formal close of the BZA session, but I know the plaintiff in that case was made aware that he should refile for a variance. And I know that Kevin discussed that they were not going to go right down and you know, start fining him for not taking a chainsaw to the fence the next morning. So it's still up in the air and it can be resolved amicably, I'm pretty sure. We just have to get through the situation.
Question for you. And is there an issue if we are, if we assume the majority moved to, to issue some type of stay for right now? That way we don't have Kevin and Denise deciding who gets fined when and what time period? Because that's going to come up again later. Will you let this guy not do it? Why can't I not pay until then?
Well, if you do that, Scott, I would highly recommend we make this case specific. Because again, BZA takes the outlawing cases. I don't want to make a blanket statement to that effect. But yeah, case specific in this case, yes.
Thank you for that opinion, Russ. But however, this is the council making this decision.
And we'll, we'll keep it to the council right now. Back, Darla, is that fair with you?
Well, I think technically the BZA and the plan commission are the organizations that decide if they're going to enforce the fines and fees. So, um.
Appellate though?
Pardon me?
Would we not be the appellate if they tried to issue a fine and fee that someone thinks the BZA is?
Does anybody, I guess, does anybody?
Put it on Kevin and Denise that they're their arbiters when the fine moves forward.
Right. But I think we've all, what I hear everybody saying is that Kevin and Denise have not suggested to this gentleman that they will fine him right away. So I guess is anybody concerned about that, about them reversing themselves?
I'm not concerned about them reversing, but we're talking about a hearing that was December 9th. So we're not going to be addressing this till well over a month after the hearing. So I mean, Kevin made it clear, he's not going to run out and start fining the guy, like Russell said. But how long is that going to be? I mean, if this drags out to end of January, beginning of February, I mean, there's no time limit given. And I'm, I'm just thinking that needs to be tightened up.
I will.
Go ahead. I'm sorry, Darla.
I will suggest to Kevin, I'm not sure I need to do this, but I will suggest to Kevin and Denise that they not find the gentleman until this is resolved. And if, if the petitioner doesn't make a decision pretty quickly as to what he wants to do, then Kevin and Denise can give him a time limit. Does that make sense?
Yeah. And.
Dan, why don't, why don't we, why don't we let Darla suggest that to Kevin and Denise? And I'll go in and reinforce that thought. And I don't think we are going to have to worry about any fines in the near future until this is resolved.
Yeah, exactly, Mike. And that was what I was getting ready to say. I think Kevin and Denise both are listening to us. Well, Kevin's gone, but I, I'm sure there won't be any fines issued until we can resolve this.
Well, my point was not that they're going to find this guy. I just don't want to put them in a position later where somebody else says, you didn't find this guy, but you are finding me.
I, I, listen, I'll make sure that Kevin's not in that position. And I'm sure there will not be any fines levied until we have this out with the town board.
Thank you, Mike. Scott, are you good?
Yeah, I'm good. I just don't want to put our employees in a bad position that they shouldn't be in because it's something we're doing.
And I agree with you 100%. And I, I really feel bad Kevin's not here to speak on this issue. But it is what it is. So William, you good?
I'm good. I just wish the BZA would have tabled this then, because then we would have that time.
Okay. Trevor?
I'm good.
Pam?
We're going to, sorry, real quick. Sandy, did you give us the work day, the work session day?
The work session, there's one a month. So January 19th is the first one and February 16th is the second one.
Perfect, thank you.
And that is in your packet.
Can you put that on the agenda for the January 19th one, fencing ordinances?
That's a work session you want.
That's what I meant.
Okay.
Okay, I think we beat this to death. Let's move on to privilege of the floor. Anyone have any non-agenda items to speak on? Seeing none, we will go back to the council. I'm sorry, skip supervisors. It's a long night here. Start with supervisors. Mike, I've seen you pop up, you can go first.
Thank you, real quick.
Yeah, I'm good.
Mike Corman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Go first. Okay, real quick, I just want to give a shout out to our Department of Public Works. The, we had a fire the other day. And we know that when the chips are down, there's a lot of auxiliary functions that our accrues, the Department of Public Works can do. So when we had a call for a fire in town, I, I knew I could get some help right away. And they, I did, I hadn't paged out and they responded and they helped us out. And on Christmas Eve, so I'm sorry, the 30th. And I'm sorry, the 23rd, excuse me, late in the afternoon. And so shout out to those guys that, you know, all I had to do was call and they were right there. I do appreciate that.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, Mike Farmer?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Is Denise on? I don't think she is. Danny Stockit?
I'm good, I have nothing.
Jimmy Dernall?
Yeah, I just want to take a minute to thank the fire department. We had just a little issue about proper procedures, proper equipment to wear at a COVID scene. Mike and Lieutenant White stepped up and Chris Klaus stepped up and put together some packages for us that we can, when we go hands on with a COVID patient, we know what to do, when to do it. And when we use them, we need to take it right back to the fire department and they exchange it out for us. I wanted to thank those three fellows for that. Like I say, Mark White and Chief Klaus and Chief Corman. Been, been great to work with them and seemed like we get along so well. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Jimmy. Sandy, do you have anything?
No.
Okay, did I cover everyone? I think I did. All right, now we'll bring it back to the council. I would just like to add or say that it's been a wonderful year. It's been a crazy hectic year. I look forward to 2021, getting here sooner than you can imagine. But I'd just like to thank all the employees and I hope everyone has a safe and happy New Years. Any other council comment? Scott?
No, thank you.
Trevor?
Nope, thank you.
Pam?
No, just everybody have a happy New Year.
William?
Pretty much ditto and warn everybody when the ball drops, if it says 2020 again, run and hide.
Very much agree with you, William. All right. I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Any council comment? Any public comment? Sandy Rocco?
Anne Swafford?
Yes.
Scott Oldham?
Yes.
William Ellis?
Yes.
Trevor Sager?
Yes.
Pamela Samples?
Yes.
Meeting adjourned at 8:13.
Thanks, everyone.